Is Kelly ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And are we ready?
I believe.
Yes?
Okay.
Good afternoon. It is November 17th, 2020. And before we start our work session for this afternoon, Mr. Bolden will be offering a word of prayer.
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing for those who have been called to lead the cities and community entities in which we live, work, and play. Help us as leaders. Do not ask first how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? Remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and it is our responsibility to serve the common good for all. Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. We ask prayers for those who are suffering health issues, both physically, emotionally, mentally from the coronavirus. This we pray in the name of all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll now call our meeting to order of November 17th, 2020. And if you would join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on our agenda is a work session. And Mr. Conasares.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Mario Canizaro, City Manager. Here on the virtual feed, you'll have Kelly Barnes from Hillco. He'll be making the majority of the comments about our legislative agenda, what we're proposing. Certainly, the intent tonight is to, or today, is to put those items before you, get your feedback to see if we're on target with what you all see as a body so that we can pursue these efforts along with Hillco. And then, at the conclusion of Kelly's comments, I'd like to come back up and just kind of give you a quick overview of kind of next steps over the coming weeks. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barnes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Kelly.
Hi there. How are you?
Doing very well. Welcome. We are so glad you're with us this afternoon.
Well, thanks for having me. I can't see myself. Can you see me on the screen?
No, we cannot.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation part while I work on this camera here. Let's see if I can share my screen at least and get that part up.
Okay.
Can you see that?
No, sir. We can hear you very well.
Yeah, well, that's... I wish that was all it would be. The camera's not cooperating today. Let me try one last thing here. We don't have to just do audio. Bear with me one more minute here. I'm sorry, guys. I go to my cellphone camera and do it that way, so.
Kelly, can you hear me? This is Matt from the City IT Department.
Hey, Matt.
Could you look in your bottom right-hand corner? Do you see the Present Now button?
I do.
Okay, and if you choose that, what happens?
It's not allowing me to click it. It's grayed out.
Okay. Do you mind trying to disconnect and reconnect to the meeting real quick? We'll wait.
I will do that. Sorry. Sorry, guys.
Hey, no, no problem at all. We'll be right here.
All right, stand by.
Sure.
Sorry about that. We're on my iPhone now.
Hey, no problem. We can see clearly.
I'm not sure if I can do... Share screen from this one, but...
I think you can. You might have to reorient it in landscape mode or turn it on inside. Kelly, we could present that presentation if you have it.
You can pull up the PowerPoint, and then I can just talk via the phone, you think? Is that easier?
Yes, sir. We can do that if that's a problem.
That's probably going to be a lot easier. I'm sorry to make you do that.
Oh, no problem at all. That's what we're here for. If you will send it to it@nactx.us.
IC@nactx.
It.
It@nactx.us. As in it.
Okay, just got sent your way.
Okay, we're about to check it and get it pulled up.
While we're waiting on that, I want to introduce council. I think Eddie, he said Hillco is on with us too and helps me with Nacogdoches matters. And he also handles municipal... Formerly at EMRS, or he joined up at Hillco. So Eddie is going to join us this evening. How about that?
Okay, we can see that?
Is that doable for everybody?
So, yes, sir.
Okay, the only problem is if I get a text message or a call, it's going to pop up. We'll go ahead, Mayor, if you're okay.
Yes, I'm fine. Go right ahead.
Okay, and I think you'll have this in your packets. So what I wanted to do, run through tonight, is kind of a quick political update from the election and then kind of dive into the legislative session. And I know we're going to talk about a legislative agenda for the city, so we'll get into those subjects. But first, I'm going to begin with a quick political update. And feel free to interrupt me as I move slide to slide if you have a question. And of course, I'll answer any at the end as well. So, quick update on the 2020 elections in Texas. The Texas House, we discussed, was considered by a decent amount of people as being in play for the Democrats to take over for the first time in multiple decades. That ended up not being the case. Republicans are going to have the exact same makeup in the House of 83 Republicans and 67 Democrats. So the Democrats picked up one seat. The Republicans picked up one seat. So it was, you know, a wash, so to speak. And as far as House leadership goes, as most of you remember, the Speaker of the House, Dennis Bonnet, announced he was not running for reelection anymore. So as soon as it became clear on election night that the Republicans were going to hold the majority, the Speaker's campaign kicked off very quickly. Six candidates filed, leading up to it, some Democrats and some Republicans. And then, like I said, once it became clear the Republicans were in charge, those three Democrats withdrew their candidacy. And Representative Dade Phelan from Beaumont was able to secure 83 votes quickly. And you only need 76 to become Speaker, and that number grew quickly to over 100. And now he has a supermajority of the Republican caucus and a large number of Democrats as well. He's assembling a transition team. He announced his actual Chief of Staff yesterday, Julia Rathgaber, who's been a longtime Capitol figure and just was running the AECT Trade Association for Electric Companies in Texas. So she's widely respected in the Capitol and is being seen as a very great hire for Speaker-elect Dade Phelan. In the Texas Senate, there was really only one competitive seat. It was in San Antonio. The Democrats were favored to pick it up, and they did. So last session, it was 19 Republicans, 12 Democrats. This, it'll be just one seat difference, 18 to 13. Why that matters is that currently, there's a rule that requires you to have three-fifths support in the Senate to bring legislation to the floor. Now, with that three-fifths gone, you know, Republicans are going to have to find a way to cut a deal on certain subjects in the chamber. And so that's going to be an interesting political dynamic to watch is, are they able to flip a Democrat or two to vote for a certain item? So that's... The Senate will be very interesting to watch this session. And just to kind of a... As we move into what this session is going to look like, you know, with COVID, we're still waiting to see what the Capitol will look like in Austin. We anticipate it being open to some extent with, you know, a bunch of safety requirements with masks and temperature checks and whatnot. But nothing has been finalized. And I think leadership was kind of waiting for a Speaker to be installed so that the Speaker, Lieutenant Governor, and Governor could all kind of get their heads together and figure out, how do we do this? And how do we do this safely? So that... And then those conversations are happening right now. As far as the legislative session goes, we're getting ready to kick off January the 12th. 140-day session ending in late May. An interesting thing that's already begun is bill prefiling. Started on Monday, November 9th. And so far, over 600 pieces of legislation filed between both chambers. So early stuff out of the gate that you're seeing is stuff that most people want to get a large headline out of for the most part. You're seeing a lot of bills legalizing marijuana, full-blown constitutional amendments. You're seeing sports betting. You're seeing casino gaming. Some notable items that will be discussed on the floor, you know, the George Floyd Act, police reform bill. That is, that has been prefilled by San Fronia Thompson out of Harris County. So a lot of stuff out of the gates. And normally, we end up with over 7,000 bills filed. So a long way to go till the bill filing deadline, which is in March. So a lot of stuff is starting to happen. Some of the big issues, and we've talked about a little bit of this, local control in effort to challenge local government authority during a disaster. And the governor, there is a bill that's been filed, for instance, that would create an emergency powers board that for big decisions such as closing businesses and restricting capacity, et cetera, there would be a board that would make those decisions and work with the governor's office instead of him unilaterally. So that will be an interesting debate where that bill goes in this session. The budget, we've also talked about. You know, we're predicting still a pretty hefty shortfall at the end of 2020. And I think the big question mark as far as how bad the budget will be next session is in the next CARES Act. A, is it going to ever pass, I think, is the question. I know a lot of cities and local governments are asking. But B, when it does, what's in it? And are we going to have some, you know, local government assistance in there? Is it going to go to the state at the Texas Department of Emergency Management? And are they going to be distributing those funds? You know, it's just a big question mark. So we may be in a really bad budget situation with no federal help. And if the feds come into a large degree, then the situation obviously looks quite a bit better. So that's something we're monitoring. A couple other things, you know, property taxes will again be out there, you know, especially the property tax disaster loophole because, you know, the pandemic is certainly a disaster. It's not a natural disaster. And I think, you know, a fight over how do we define disaster in Texas will be something to watch this session because of what COVID has done to the state. And then redistricting will not happen in the regular session because we are not going to get the census numbers, as most of you, I'm sure, are aware, until late summer, early fall of 2021. So not able to really draw these new districts until that happens. And of course, that'll be a big fight. And just for your knowledge, you know, in East Texas, population has not grown at the level that it has in the metro area. So rural Texas will have to fight to keep, you know, counties together, cities together before, you know, things kind of get split up and look a little different. So that'll be a big issue this session, but obviously not till probably September-ish before we get to that subject. Any questions on that front before I go to the legislative agenda?
Nope. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So we've been working on a legislative agenda for the city of Nacogdoches with Mario and others to kind of have something on paper that the city can take a look at, bless, and we can take to lawmakers up at the Capitol and let them know what Nacogdoches really wants this session, needs this session, and kind of wants to participate in. And it's something I know Nacogdoches hasn't really done formally. And I think it's a great opportunity, though, to advocate for an agenda. So we divided up into a couple sections. This slide has got two on the front, governance slash economic development, and then fiscal and financial issues. So I'll run through here the governance side first. Supporting legislation recognizing the need for local control. Opposing legislation that erodes local control and municipal authority from city councils. We've got the virtual meeting ability put in there to support legislation for that. Opposing the ability to annex property within. It's ETJ for Nacogdoches. And then looking at all kinds of economic development tools in that section right there, from tax increment financing, Chapter 380 agreements. You know, watching that stuff. And I will tell you, and Mario has some of this and Larissa as well, that, you know, already a number of bills filed on these subjects out there right now that are moving. So we'll have to monitor all of them. That's why I think it's important to have a stance. Elections, supporting legislation that provides for a uniform election date for municipal runoff elections. And then redistricting, this is one we probably should discuss, but opposing legislation that would divide Nacogdoches into more than one legislative district. You know, that's something I'd like the council's, obviously, feedback on how we want to approach that redistricting subject just because, you know, Nacogdoches County, how that looks next session. And do we want, you know, to move things around? Do we want to stay together? And it's just going to be a big issue that kind of needs to be addressed on the front end from my standpoint. Fiscal and financial issues, supporting expanding the CARES Act or future COVID-19 funding. Supporting legislation that allows cities the ability to issue debt for public purposes. Opposing legislation that limits cities' ability to manage debt. And then opposing legislation that imposes revenue caps, which would negatively affect the economic stability of Nacogdoches. Things such as a reduced rollback rate, mandated tax rate increase elections, reduced rollback petition requirements. And then finally, supporting hot tax reporting and the taxing of short-term rentals such as Airbnb and homeaways. And then on this final slide for the agenda, four subjects. Education, we've got supporting Stephen F. Austin State University and specifically their capital funding request. They have three in there, you'll see. The last time the state passed a tuition revenue bond, which funds capital construction projects at higher-ed universities, was 2015. I will tell you, there was a time in the early 2000s where every legislative session, TRB bill would pass. And so, as you know, it'll have been, you know, six years with the last TRB we did in Texas. So that'll be something to watch this session. Obviously, a bad budget year, but it is, you know, a debt service project. And then supporting legislation that benefits public primary and secondary schools, especially Nacogdoches ISD. The whole virtual learning aspect has changed public education, frankly, forever, as we all know. And making sure that Nacogdoches ISD, nothing harmful comes across them this session up at the Capitol. From a transportation front, we've put three subjects in there. Supporting I-69. I know that's a major priority. Supporting the Unified Transportation Program at TechDOT, where Nacogdoches currently has several pending projects out there. I know we've discussed that several months ago at council. And then finally, supporting the Capital Aviation Improvement Program. That is the program where, and I had spoken to the airport manager, where the city submits a letter of interest to TechDOT of some of their wish lists for the airport, so to speak. TechDOT sends their engineer out there. They look at the projects, you know, see what makes sense, what might not make sense. And then gets that, if it gets approved, it's put into that improvement plan at TechDOT, where you're in a five-year waiting queue, basically, for airport funds. On the utilities front and development front, we've got opposing legislation that erodes, limits, curtails ability to, for cities to manage city right-of-way. Supporting allowing the city to charge market-based rates for access to the city's right-of-ways. We've put the Central Heights water issue in there. I know we've spoken about that before, different funding streams at the General Land Office and Texas Water Development Board. And then Nacogdoches supporting the development of a statewide broadband plan to expand high-speed internet access across rural Texas. I'm sure most of you might be aware Senator Nichols, very instrumental in getting a letter from the East Texas delegation sent to the governor, basically asking him to, you know, we really need a statewide broadband plan. We need it really bad in East Texas. And with COVID and the virtual learning, virtual meetings, it's now a need more than ever in rural Texas. So we'll see how that progresses this session. And then from a development standpoint, we put the building materials bill from last session, which, you know, limits the ability of cities to dictate, you know, building code and how plots of land get used. And then the 30-day shot clock bill for cities to turn around permits for certain developers. So those are kind of the big highlights. I know I ran through that fairly quickly. But Mario, I guess I'll turn it back to you unless council has questions for me on a specific item. I'm happy to address further.
Council members, does anyone have something specific for Kelly at this point? Amelia, are you good?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, yes, please go right ahead.
Okay, let me back out of here. So I can get back to this room. Okay.
Okay. No, it's okay. I have a question on what, I mean, this is kind of general, but what support means? And I guess specifically as it relates to, because, you know, everything makes sense. Everything that you said support makes sense that we would want to support. And everything that you say oppose makes sense that we would want to oppose. My question is, in terms of our position, it's more so, what does support mean? For example, with legislation that benefits public schools or supporting funding strategies for the Central Heights water issue or the statewide broadband plan? Those are three things that caught my eye that I just, I wondered, does that mean like, if there are bills coming down the pipeline, then we, you, we through you support them? Or we advocate for bills to be pushed? What does that mean?
Yeah, so it's a good question. Yeah, it can be confusing when you see support in a period afterwards. So basically, how the process works for the most part, I'll use the statewide broadband plan as an example. Senator Nichols sent that letter to the governor. They're working on things right now. Does the governor going to use an executive order? Is he going to put something out there? Or is he going to ask Senator Nichols, maybe Representative Ashby, they co-sign that letter, and I know Travis Clardy did as well, to file legislation? And so what I've been doing is Mario is getting a list of bills daily filed on some of these subjects. So we're identifying issues already, you know, with CARES Act or public education or Stephen F. Austin, for instance, that TRB bill has already been filed, which includes SFA in there, to mark as our support column. And we've also got bills we're building in our opposed column. So basically, it's a very fluid process. But yeah, we want to find actual bills to support and oppose. And that's already happening with the 700 we already have, basically.
Okay. And then with the funding strategies for the Central Heights water issue, I imagine that that's not a bill that's going to come down the pipeline from like some representative in West Texas. It's a very local issue. And so I imagine that the support for that looks different than what you described just now.
Right. And so for that issue particularly, we had Steve and Larissa, sorry, Steve, the city engineer, and Larissa back in early spring come to Austin and met at the GLO and the Water Development Board. And as we look at those funding streams and we identify, okay, we're really going to go after this specific fund at the General Land Office. Having Representative Clardy and Senator Nichols support that is key. But having other East Texas lawmakers sign a letter supporting it, potentially having the chairman of the Natural Resources Committee in the House, who oversees water issues, support that as well would be key. He's currently Lyle Larson, a member out of San Antonio. That chairmanship could be different next session. And so we'll need to go to that new member and say, hey, here's the issue. We have great support locally, but we'd love you as the chairman who's overseeing the policy in the House to help us out, and the same for the Senate.
Okay, so it's there. It's having a heavier hand and sort of coordinating some sort of search for resolution.
Right. And, you know, it just helps when a lot of these state agencies receive requests all the time from their state rep and state senator. And just having, frankly, you know, more people there, like you said, backing this up, tends to vote, you know, well for these projects, frankly. And so, yeah, I'd look at the water chairman in the House, the Senate. We'd talk to the governors, water policy staffers, and have them look at this issue and kind of use every approach across the board.
Got it.
And Kelly also is, and I'm sorry, this is Eddie Solis, also is defense. Also keeping this on the agenda, council member, to make sure that nothing is filed that somehow or another would impede or harm or in any way, you know, you know, get in the way of the progress of that project.
Awesome. That makes sense.
Okay.
Is that all you had, Amelia?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bolden?
I just have a comment. On legislators that are in support of ending somewhat city control. Are those legislators still in place? And is that the majority that speaks for the legislators? Or is there a minority in that group? I mean, there seem to be some that's vassing their opinion. And then there's some that's not avocing an opinion one way or the other.
It's a good question. You remember, I think you and I spoke about this maybe a year ago at council. Some of the attacks local governments came under from specifically the Texas House Speaker with regards to local control. Wanting to, you know, he was said on the recording, you know, punish cities, so to speak. I will tell you that the new leadership in the House, I think, it's going to be a measured approach. It's not going to be as adversarial, I feel like, for local government. We're still going to have to fight fights and oppose things. But to answer your question, I don't think that opinion is as strong as it was from last session. So I think we've gotten a little bit better. But I would caution you, we haven't gotten to session yet, so we'll see their true colors sooner than later.
Yeah, what is it the city, our cities can do to help?
Well, I think what you guys are doing, frankly, Well, I think what you guys are doing frankly, having a legislative agenda is not something NACADOCUS has done for as long as I can remember, you know, working on these issues when I actually worked in the legislature. And so, the more cities that have an actual agenda to advocate for as opposed to just sitting on the sidelines, really helps this case, and especially rural Texas, you know. Last session, we saw a lot of the urban counties, urban cities really take a bunch of this fire, and the rural areas weren't as activated. And so, I think that's a big question moving forward is making sure that the rural Texas communities are in lockstep on these issues about local control and not letting the Dallas, Houston, Austins, you know, dominate the fight, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. One other comment. Back in 2018, the GLO gave debt card permission to use some of Harvey funds to do a survey of the broadband or the lack of broadband in deep east Texas. And it's taken two years for it to get the legislators to discuss and move forward with it. That was just a comment.
Yeah, and you're right. This is long overdue, and I think, you know, the situation with COVID has gotten people's attention, and it's unfortunate that it takes a pandemic sometimes to get things moving.
Thank you.
Kelly, I had a question for you, going back to the Central Heights water issue. Would you mind explaining to me how that works? Is it a situation where you got together with Steve and Larissa and asked for more details on the actual problem, and then the problem is taken to like the Water Development Board and they figure out a solution? Or is that really up to us if we want to see some sort of resolution where we propose A, B, and C and rough ballpark costs, and then we take it? Like, how much involvement do you need from us for us to get a likely resolution or funding?
Yeah, well, I think it's really helpful to have that, and I know when we met in the spring in Austin with both those agencies, you know, one funding stream was a grant program, one funding stream was a loan program. And we had compiled everything, and we had just missed the deadlines for those cycles right around that meeting. It was really kind of bad timing frankly. But yeah, getting that direction from the city, from council, from Mario, from Steve, you know, do we want to go after this grant application at the GLOs? Do we want to go after this loan? And then, we go execute that by getting the application together, talking to key stakeholders, meeting with, if it's the Water Development Board, meeting with all the commissioners, having the lawmakers contact those commissioners. But yes, we do need that direction when we're ready to pull the trigger of which program, and then we can get activated on our end.
Okay.
Did you have anything?
Yeah. Hi, Kelly. I've got a couple of, I hope, fairly quick questions. Just sort of generally on the ETJ, excuse me, annexation issue. Are there any specific, is there any specific legislation out there that you're looking at now or looking for, or is that just a general goal to keep an eye out for any legislation on that?
It's a general goal. I have not seen anything come across just yet. Eddie, have you seen any ETJs come across since we've had the week of prefile?
No, sir.
Yeah, so nothing yet, but we're just monitoring. So, we've got, you know, searches set up on all these subjects, so we get pinged when something is filed, and when something is filed on one of these subjects, it'll go into that list that the city manager will have to look at and, you know, see how active we need to get. You know, some of these bills will only impact urban cities, and some won't impact us at all, but we still need to monitor them if they were to become, you know, of statewide impact.
Right, right. And I guess basically the same question on any amendments to the building materials bill.
Same thing. There was a bill filed on building materials limiting to cities. Eddie, what was the population bracket again?
25,000.
25,000 or less. So, we're outside of that, obviously, with our population, so, but it's something we got to monitor that if, you know, certain people start debating things and they go, well, why is the bracket at 25,000? Shouldn't it be at 50? Then, you know, that, now we're in the ballgame, and so it's just something we're going to have to watch.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So, do you want to stay on while Mario talks in case we have any other questions? Or are you?
I'm happy to, Mario. Yeah, y'all tell me. I'm happy to stand by and match your, serve at your pleasure the rest of the night, so.
Well, really, it was just to get everyone's input. Obviously, the questions that were asked, hopefully, we're on target with what things that you all want to see as part of your agenda. And then, really, if, whether whatever impact input you have, if we need to make some modifications, or if we're ready to go, my thoughts would be that we would come to your next meeting on the first and request that a resolution be passed or at least considered, basically approving the list that was shown or provided in your backend materials. And that will basically be our legislative agenda starting January 1 through the end of the session.
Okay. So, then we probably are finished with Kelly. And thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank Eddie too for us.
You bet. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll be in touch. Thanks, guys.
They will.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So, anything else you want to add to what you just said?
No, ma'am. Really, just to kind of bring it to everyone's attention, again, to just to see if we're on target, and if we are, we'll be coming back to you on December the 1st with a resolution, so that way we have it all buttoned up. Kelly has it as our, sort of our official, the city's official statement of record, and then we'll offer the races to keep monitoring and keep folks informed. And then, as things come up, if we need to do a series of letter writing, we can get the letters ready for your signature, Mayor, or whoever is designated, or if we have to as things, if we get more guidance from Kelly and his group, and even from Mr. Clardy or Mr. Nichols as far as how the Capitol is going to open up or not open up, if we need to send folks to Austin, we're ready to go and make sure that we're ready there, we're ready to represent our community in front of the legislature.
I know that we have, our last TML board meeting of the year is December 4th, and our meeting is December 1st. I don't know that anything would change in what TML would advise as far as the legislative session, but that might be, you know, we might want to think about that.
Sure.
As a timing issue.
Absolutely. We can certainly bring it to the 15th, if that's what you, either way.
Okay. Well, I think what I could probably know, the materials arrive a week before. So, right, Jen, is that correct? The materials for that board meeting usually? So, as soon as they arrive, I would suggest we can sit down together and kind of look through them just to see if there's anything new, and if not, we'll just keep it on the on the first, if that's okay with council? Okay. So, for what he has just mentioned, does anyone have any questions or comments?
The NACADOCUS redistricting, I'd be curious to hear a little bit about that. Well, I meant to ask that. It just slipped past me.
I did too. Splitting, there's really a chance that they could split our, a city, not the county, but a city.
Potential. It just depends on how those things are all redrawn.
Okay. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It is a little after 5:00, so we are going to take a break until 5:30 PM. It is, I'll say a little after 5:00. I will say it is 5:08 November 17, 2020, and we will return at 5:30. Amelia, how are you?
I'm doing okay on like, mm, three hours of sleep. How are you?
Oh, my goodness. Well, I just didn't get to say, we didn't get to say hello before that we started, so I just wanted to.
Thank you.
To be a little more personal.
Well, thank you. Hi.
Of course, of course. Thank you very much. Oh, I've been waiting for this.
I took your.
Oh, yeah, I need to drop that down to $10.
Oh, my goodness.
You should have told me. They told me that thing had been there for months.
You were welcome. I was giving you a hard time.
I drank.
It was good.
It was good for me.
We'll have to get some more.
It'll be a Casa kid and enjoy it.
It's a little different. You can use it towards any purchase that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Hammered turkey.
Okay. If I could have everyone's attention, we're ready to resume our council meeting. Good evening. It is 5:30, and we are, we had finished our work session earlier, and so we are going to continue our meeting of November 17, 2020. Agenda item number four is our open forum, and did we have anyone sign up for that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No one has registered for open forum, and we will move along to our consent agenda. Council has read and looked at the items on the consent agenda. If anyone needs to pull something, we can do that for further discussion. If not, the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion. We pass the consent agenda as it's written.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Agenda item seven on our regular agenda, we're going to receive an annual report from our Public Works Department and consider approval of a contract. So, we will hear from, oh, is Kerry Walker? Or are you presenting this? It says Assistant Director of Public Works.
Myself and Bartlett will be presenting.
Okay. Well, I will turn it over to you. So, you're the Public Works Manager and the Assistant Director?
No, I'm the Public Works Manager.
That's what I thought. Okay.
How that part got on there, so.
Okay. Well, we're happy you're here. It's good to see you.
Well, as you said, I'm Kerry Walker. I'm the Public Works Manager. We got that right. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to be here tonight. We're excited to talk to you about Public Works. That's always a favorite topic of mine, so we'll just kind of give you a brief overview. I think Bartlett would like to chime in, so we're going to tag-team this thing, and at the end, I'm sure we've got questions, we'll be happy to answer for you, so. Trying to find our slide. So, as it says, we build a city, so that's Public Works. There's very happy, do we, not sure how I do that. We click this. Okay, I haven't been here since the COVID thing, so I'm all right. There we go. All right. Public Works, it consists of 42 employees, five divisions, which makes up our streets, our sanitation collection, our sanitation disposal, which is our landfill, vehicle maintenance, and our public work admin. And we, right now, we field about 400 calls a week, and they vary anything from a pothole to where do I get my driver's license, or can I report my street light out, to whatever it may be. So, we try to take care of them. Even if it's not our job or our responsibility, the girls do have on-course website pulled up all the time, so we do take care of our residents when they need to have an issue with one of our streetlights or whatever. So, we field all kinds of calls. Our street division, it makes up 14 employees, has an approximate budget of $1.2 million. This year in 2020, we completed seven paving projects, six restructuring projects. We mowed about 100 miles of state and city right-of-way. Cleared approximately 10 miles of right-of-way with our boom mower, that big mower you see running around with a big arm on it that cuts brush all the way back to the right-of-way line. Our patch truck used about 1,000 tons of hot mix repairing potholes, so quite a bit of potholes were repaired this year. Our street sweeper makes about 350 miles around the city. That's our second most popular thing that we get phone calls about. And we'll talk about our most popular here in just a second, but that's our second most popular service. Citizens really appreciate that. In this time of year, with all the leaves, we're definitely getting lots of phone calls. We continue to do storm sewers repairs and washouts as these storms have come through, assist multiple departments and projects and events. For this upcoming year, in our paving, you might see a little bit of difference. We're going to focus a lot on some intersections in smaller projects, some city-owned properties as well as intersections. For instance, West Parker, we did East Parker at North Street. We need to move over and do the West part, because where those vehicles make those turn ratios, and there's a lot of wheel movements, you know, for the first 100 feet, there's a lot of damage, and the rest of the road is good. So, that's really not a thing for the contractors to have to move in and do. And it's something small that we can jump in and out really quickly with a street crew and get that accomplished. So, you'll probably see us doing a lot of smaller things next year, which should make a big difference in what our residents see when they're traveling. So, our next division is our sanitation collection. There's 12 employees there, and you can see they're on the side of the garbage truck. And they're very proud of that picture, so we had a lot of fun taking that. So, it's on the back of most of our garbage trucks and on the side of a few. But we have 12 employees. I've got a $1.1 million approximate budget every year. A lot of the things that we do, believe it or not, we have about 8,200 residential customers that we deal with every week and pick their carts up, about 1,200 dumpsters and roll-offs that we service every week. We do downtown cart collection, mostly on Friday. You will see a lot of that going on. Our weekly curbside grass and leaf pickup, which is very popular. And our number one most popular thing is our residential curbside brush collection. And I know what phone calls y'all get. Y'all do field a few of those for us as well, so that's our most popular thing. We still continue our city recycling program, our illegal dumping. We assist SFA in their garbage collection when their truck goes down. For instance, this month of November, we've probably ran three months, or three weeks of this month with our garbage trucks collecting their garbage when they have issues. And we do our own dumpster and cart restoration and repair, so it saves quite a bit of money. Our most popular is our limb and brush collection. We did add a second brush truck this year. We actually keep a spare in case this one goes down because it's so popular, but we've had to implement both of them this year and take two of our additional street guys and move over and run two brush trucks. We used to run a clockwise rotation around the city. Now, we've divided the city in half, main street being that there's a north section and a south section, and we run a truck in each one. Of course, we live in East Texas, and I'm still getting used to that coming from the big city, but there's so many trees here. Between the storms and the COVID, where everybody was at home, there's a lot of brush. So, it's become so popular, we've had to implement two trucks just to keep up, and they're very well doing so now. But we were behind for a little while, and we have got that caught up, but it is a demand that we have to do. Our trucks hauled about 24,000 yards this year, and that's not counting what our residents brought into the landfill themselves. We did have so much brush. For instance, we have a $40,000 budget item, line item every year to grind this brush so that we can make chips and then divert it from the landfill. But because of the COVID, we had about $60,000 worth of brush, so it just, just 50% increase there, but just for that, the COVID outbreak. So, like I said, this brush is a renewable item that we do divert from our landfill, and we save that valuable airspace, so. The next slide is our public works technology, and we're experimenting with some new technologies. And I believe Bartlett said there would be something in the future, more in depth of the new work order system, but we have been experimenting with the work order system, and so far, we're running about 71% of the work orders that have been on there that public works has handled them. And we're having, we have about 100 a month that we deal with, and we're averaging 2.1 days to get one of them complete. And I was very proud of that number because we are struggling hard there in a few departments with some employee shortages, but we are managing to get those done in 2.1 days, and I was kind of surprised at that number myself, so I'm very excited for the guys to do that. Our sanitation guys are using iPads to assist with our residential cart pickup for our assisted residents, those residents that are unable to actually carry their cart to the street. We offer a service that we will go up to their house, pull their cart out, dump it, and take it back and put it at their door. It's a very well, and very well-deserved service that we provide. So, we are using an iPad now to identify those as they're driving down the road. They can see those in the truck. We make sure we don't miss them, because that thing is always changing, so. And as you can see, we also have the hot maps that we're using to identify street repairs. We do that by our patch truck, and we have implemented down below that two new one-touch apps on our iPads. One shows a patch truck and one is a brush truck. Tred in engineering has been very good at making. Tred in engineering has been very good at making a one-button thing for our guys that makes it a lot faster. They've got this, we call it the big button, but their iPad has a whole button on the screen and they can touch it. And in one butt-touch, it GPS's the coordinates of where the brush was, the pothole. We don't have to stop and take time to enter all this. It's really saved us another hour and a day kind of identifying this. And then we can utilize that stuff to see how many brush pickups we have in a year as well as how many potholes we have. And if you look at this hot map, for instance, where the red is, that shows where the patch truck spent most of his time. So now Bartlett and them through CIP and other avenues can get these streets repaired, so get them replaced. And I think Pearl Street is one of them big red spots you see on there, and I think that's fixing to happen real quick. So it's because of these things like this that they're all working together that we can, we can free the patch truck up a little bit. Our landfill has five employees and has a one point seven million dollar annual budget approximately. For those that don't know, it was permitted in February of nineteen seventy-six. It's a three hundred and twenty acres and it's inside the city limits, which is very unusual for a, for a landfill to be inside the city limits of a town. Our annual report, we just submitted to TCEQ and we have about twenty-one years of life expectancy left in the landfill as it stands today. We're receiving about twelve hundred tons a week of garbage. We continue to have high marks with TCEQ on all of our inspections and our reports. And we recently received a height extension for Block P, as we call it, all of those cells, we call them blocks. Block P is the one kind of behind, behind Lamp Light. We actually received a height extension from TCEQ to raise the level of that. But I must add that that height extension is included in that twenty-one years. Public Works and Engineering are working with our landfill engineer to come up with a new landfill permit and some new ideas. And I'm sure we'll be coming to you in the future with, with some more of that. But if we can get a new permit in place, we're thinking with these new ideas that we can, you know, add another thirty years or a total of about fifty years to the lifespan of our landfill, so. Landfill is very important. It's owned by the city. It's a lot of airspace, a lot of, a lot of income and revenue there. And our landfill's in good shape. It's run really well. Like I said, we get very good high marks from TCEQ. And we're proud of it. Our vehicle maintenance has four employees and an annual budget of about three hundred and fifty thousand. And we do all the services and repairs and preventative maintenance on all of our equipment, other than the fire trucks. Fire trucks require a certain certification to work on those pumps. Most of the time, these guys are working on garbage trucks and police cars because those are the vehicles that run almost twenty-four hours a day, every day, and have the most use and wear and tear on them, so we spend a lot of time working on those. And I'd like to, at this time, turn it over to Bartlett. I know he's got some things he'd like to say. But I would like to invite the council, I know some of y'all have been out, but if any of y'all would like a tour, I'd love to give you one. We can ride around, I can show you all the facilities and what we do, so.
Could we see real quick if, if any council members have a question about your presentation? Because you gave us a lot of information.
Sure.
And so, so we may have a couple of questions. Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, you mentioned that you mow the state and the city right-of-way. Do we get reimbursement for the state?
No, we have an agreement with TechStock. Anything inside the city limits, we mow and they maintain the roads. So it's kind of a trade-off.
Okay. And you mentioned illegal dumping. That's not only on the roadways, but also like parks and things?
Parks, roadways, we have a lot of people that go by, we'll just say Kroger's dumpster, and throw their tires in there. We have a lot of, we have, we have a lot, a lot of our businesses unfortunately get stuck paying the bill for somebody that didn't want to play by the rules, I guess is a nice way to say that. But we have illegal dumping, yes, roadways, parks is, is real, is real popular. Some of our dead-end streets, we're always finding new illegal dumping and we're catching some of them. But our dumpsters get hit pretty hard.
Yeah, I know McCrimmon's Park, it does be mattresses and...
Yes, yes.
And, you know, all kinds of frontage and stuff they throw over there.
Exactly.
Yeah. Do we have a mulcher? Or we rent that out? Or we contract that out?
For the brush?
Yeah.
No, we contract that out. Reason being is they charge us two dollars and fifty cents a yard to mulch it.
Okay.
That mulchers cost about a million dollars and they're very maintenance-heavy. There's, I'm going to say a thousand blades in there or carbide teeth that have to be replaced a lot. There's a lot of dust, debris. They catch on fire quite often, so they're a maintenance nightmare, so we're very, we bid that out. And we've got a very fair bid from a company out of Fort Worth and they charge us two fifty a yard to do that and it works really well, so.
This is just a curiosity question. What's the highest level can you raise a landfill, a plot?
Right now, our Block P, for instance, elevation plus or minus a foot, elevation is four hundred and forty feet above sea level. So we just...
Always above sea level.
Yeah. You know, TCEQ, they gave us a permit for a landfill, but with it, they gave us restriction. They didn't say, you know, go forth and have fun. They said, okay, you can only be this high. So each one of those cells has a per, has a permitted maximum height. Block P that we just talked about is four hundred and forty feet. So we just got a height extension of approximately thirty feet, so now it will go up to elevation of about four seventy. Everything is calculated above sea level, so.
Okay, this is something different, but you helped me out with a citizen one day. Could you give me a little, and the rest of us, part of that story?
The one that we were just discussing before? Yeah, you, you know, and, and I love visiting with citizens. I love to talk. My wife says I talk to everything, but fence posts or whatever. But I, I went to a citizen's house that you had informed me of that was having an issue. The gentleman's wife had recently become visually impaired and was dealing with the new challenges that were, she was faced with. Part of that was, she had a cane and she was trying to use that cane and try to learn to use that. And their hope was in a year or two through this, you could get her a CNI dog, which a dog has to be raised and trained and so that's a long process. But part of their process of getting this cane and using this cane and moving to a dog, which she had to learn to walk with this cane, and they use certain, certain things to identify going down the street.
It's called echo something, when echo...
I don't know the exact term, but it's, that's exactly right. So they use feel and they use texture a lot. And we've worked very extensively with SFA and they have a mobility's course where they teach. You see these people walking around these canes and we've worked really, really close with these people doing that. But I went and visited with him and he told me his struggles and the curb was overgrown with grass, which really is not kind of our deal sometimes, but you know, in the gutter, she was having a hard time feeling it. And he had a route that she had to learn that ended up at the park up there, Krimmon Park. So we went in with our tractor-mounted curb edges where you drive down the road and we edged all the curbs for her where she could feel them, cleaned all the bar ditches and the gutters and cleaned everything that she could really feel the texture, cleaned all the handicap ramps so she could learn to, to travel on her own, so. And at the same time, having worked with SFA, we were able to hook him up with this instructor over this course so that he could get a lot of his questions answered and get some, some life skills for her, so. It worked out really well, so, you know, happy to help our citizens like that, so.
Really appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
You've done a great job.
You're welcome.
And, and that's echo, that's cane they use, it makes a certain sign where there's on the side of the top of the curb, so.
Yes.
That's why she wanted the, the grass and the debris cleaned off.
Yes, we learned kind of the hard way that these, these people that teach this, this course, they use the tape on a crosswalk. You see sometimes that, you know, old ones were just painted. We were going to paint one one day and I happened to be watching them the day before and I saw them using that tape. So I, so I got to watch them, so I went and talked to them and I found out that they feel that crosswalk. So through that, we got them to come here and do a course for all of Public Works, for Engineering. We all put blindfolds on, walked around the square, learned what they needed, what we needed to know to help them better, help our citizens travel through the community, so it's really been an eye-opening thing for us to do, so. And we, we've really enjoyed the relationship we've had with them, but now we use thermal tape everywhere, so you probably noticed that. And we bring them out with us if we have an intersection that has a problem and they help us kind of navigate that for us, so. It's been a, been a bit of a fun relationship.
Thank you.
Guys?
Carrie, I appreciate the presentation and I really enjoyed and was grateful for you taking me around and showing me what all we do. I was blown away with how efficient you make that thing run. One thing you mentioned that stood out to me is that you get phone calls on the streetlights and the DPS-type calls.
Yes.
And I love the attitude that you have, that it might not be your job, but it is your problem. And the way that you handle it shows ownership. And so I love that, the way that you carry that down through your, your employees. That's, that's outstanding, so you're doing a great job. I really appreciate it.
Jay?
Really, my only question, other than saying thank you very much for all that you coordinate and make happen on a daily basis that a lot of people don't even realize is going on. Relating to the landfill, has the city ever looked, and you've probably answered this question before, but has the city ever looked at the possibility of harvesting and selling methane from that? Or is it, is there not enough produced here?
That's a great question. Yes, we have looked at it. And for instance, I'll give you an example, City of Denton and, and our city manager could talk a whole lot more in depth than I can, but they harvest their methane at one point and made biodiesel from it. Had a big plant, I've toured it, it's really cool, but their cells are really deep and they're really big. So it generates a lot of methane in one place because all of that methane has to be piped to one location to then convert it to fuel. Our cells are so shallow and so spread out over that three hundred and twenty acres, it takes an excessive amount of piping to get a minimal amount of methane, so it's...
Just not a good...
It's not feasible to harvest. At some point, it might be more valuable. It might be that way at some point, but right now it's not, so.
Okay, thank you.
Amelia, did you have anything?
Yes, I've got two, two questions for you. Thank you so much for, for that presentation. My first question that I have, and it's just because I recently had a constituent email about this. Regarding your placement, the placement of dumpsters, what's the, the procedure that, that a community, community member would have to go through if she sees that, that a dumpster placement might be like obstructing her, her, her line of sight and maybe creating a, a safety situation in terms of like driving and turning right and not being able to see upcoming traffic? What, what would community members need to do in order to have that issue addressed?
Contact our engineering department, Public Works. As long as they make an initial phone call and we can, we can vet that phone call, we can go look. And, and I'm not sure which one you're referring to, but we have been looking at one this week where there is a dumpster place that's kind of in a site triangle that makes it hard for smaller vehicles to view as they're pulling out on, on the street. And as of yesterday, we came up with a place finally that we think we can put that, that's not in that site triangle that will assist them. And, you know, we deal with dumpsters a lot and dumpsters are a necessary evil. There, a lot of times we put them in a enclosure to make them as pretty as we can, some that we can't. So we always have an issue where we're going to put them and how we can put them where the citizens can, can see properly and they can live with, but at the same time, we can safely pick that up and service our res, our business customers' needs as far as the dumpster goes. But yeah, we did find one this week that we have finally come up with a solution. It was a very challenging piece of property, but we did find something and we're in the process now of trying to get that changed out and get that moved, so. As far, as far as to answer your question, as long as they contact City Hall, we will, we will get that information and we can start working to achieve that. So I meet with a lot of people on a lot of dumpsters, a lot of carts and a lot of different issues every day and enjoy going out and visiting with them, but we can take care of it for sure.
Is it the one on North Verdonian Star?
Yes.
Or are you talking, okay, all right, awesome. And question number two for you. I would love to take you up on the offer to tour the facilities and do kind of a ride-along. Can I bring my four-year-old?
I don't have a problem. As long as nobody else does, I don't either, so. We do a lot of, before COVID, I should say, we do a lot of tours with kids at the landfill, several schools and, and the colleges. So yeah, more than married, we're fine.
Because between you and the fire department, y'all are going to make me the coolest mom to my kid.
I understand.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right.
And I have one that I bring up every year.
Okay.
And I just want to, I hope that you all are still working on the solution for this problem, but I know that we have to have special certification to disseminate weed killer in the sidewalks and curbs. And I'm just concerned about the breakdown of all of that and the, what the repair cost is going to be in the future. And there's got to be some kind of alternative out there that we could do that because it really makes a difference in the aesthetics of our streets.
I totally agree. And we did find a contractor that actually does spraying for a lot of cities and states that has killer, weed killers, herbicides, I guess, proper way to say that, that are, are safe for our waters and safe that are approved, that are not that invasive. And we have been talking to him. I have, and this COVID kind of slowed things down. But actually, I did get some correspondence from him a couple of weeks ago, so we'll probably take that back up. But, but yes, I have found some that are EPA-approved and I think will be fine and safe for us to use, so. And we can contract that relatively inexpensive, really, so.
I'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks so much, Carrie.
And Mr. Bartlett.
Appreciate you very much. And Steve Bartlett, welcome. You're going to be speaking on the approval of the contractor between the city and Dupla Chain Contractors.
No ma'am, I'm just going to continue.
Oh, you're going to follow up with him?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works, and just wanted to kind of follow Carrie and ask Carrie if I could just kind of come behind him and just tell you. Of course, you can see these departments accomplish a lot and there's, there's no doubt. And a lot of that, of course, is to some excellent management of Carrie and his senior staff and all, and their workers, so. And thank you for complimenting them. They, they do a lot. I wanted to tell you something that Carrie probably doesn't show you in that presentation is there are a lot of operational challenges to, to run in those departments that a lot of times will divert all of our personnel away from these primary tasks. And a lot of folks may not understand that, so we wanted to bring that to your attention. But things like weather and flooding, things like special events set up. When we do blueberry festivals or detouring, takes a lot of these folks' effort away from the street projects. Things like traffic controls for other departments. So when our utility construction department is repairing a line on North Street, all the barricading that meets state standards is all done by these guys who are trained to know what signs to put out and barricade so that it's safe and quite honestly, the lowest liability process we can do. So these things tend to take away from our normal street operations. The brush, the leaves, sweeping, pothole repair, all those guys move over and help do these alternate. So when you and I get calls for not picking up brush or we understand that their leaves are still bagged on their front porch, you've got to remember sometimes it's because we've got an all-hands-on-deck in another area. So those crews are not left to continue to do potholes during that time. A lot of our citizens don't understand that we don't do both. But for example, Carrie is fully set up, his group's fully set up to pave. We have a nice paving machine and all the equipment tools to do that. It takes a ten-member crew to pave. That is, again, everybody stops picking up brush and filling potholes and we all go pave. This is why, and Carrie told you that next year he's going to focus on probably some city facilities, like city parking lots and small intersections, because we're looking for kind of some one-day, two-day paving jobs that they can go do and then be prepared to go back to doing their, I guess, the normal jobs, if you want to call it that. But it takes so many people and so much effort. And I will tell you, this department has never been at full complement in the last few years. We've always been understaffed, but we have not had our full complement of staff. So we struggle with hiring, as a lot of companies do nowadays, and we still have openings today, so. All these things, these guys have juggled a whole lot when he shows you what he's done. Our future plans are continue to probably look at some other outsourcing alternatives. So we will continue to contract paving, probably more so for city streets. We do, we do that now to the tune of a million or more a year. And we're probably going to try to keep Carrie and the street crews in doing just our local parks and stuff, where they literally could stop halfway through a park project and return to an emergency. So looking for outsourcing, we'll be also developing a new staffing plan. So we're going to try to find out what we really need to do so that we can probably up our game a little bit staff-wise. And along with staff comes equipment and vehicle fleet needs, so they kind of are all married. So we're working with city manager's office right now to kind of develop those needs and so that we can have them to you to present and probably assess in the next budget cycle. So I wanted you to know that it's a challenge. He's been even more challenged lately with the lack of personnel, not just counting all the world of COVID. So we just are continuing to seek ways... counting all that world of COVID. So we just are continuing to seek ways to increase our level of service. And I think in this case, we may have to kind of up what we're doing in order to keep doing that. So be happy to answer any questions as well. If you have any, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Just one question. Is it more cost-effective to do it in-house and that's counting personnel and equipment and et cetera?
And as far as paving is concerned?
Right.
On, on a square yardage basis, if you wanted to kind of evaluate it that way, with our personnel and equipment, it's very cost-effective for us to do that. So yes, I think we can. You've got to remember, starting about right now, councilman, for example, they quit making asphalt somewhere around this time of year and we don't pick it back up till it warms up in the spring. So if we had full-time paving crews that did nothing else, we would have to come up with alternative projects for them. So for us, it's actually more cost-efficient to probably contract this out with guys who have all the large equipment and all the personnel and we use them when we need them. So I think the smaller projects, the intersections, the things we can go out and do and come back, it's cost-effective. I think that, as Carrie said, we're fixing to do Pearl Street with Lone Star, one of our contractors is, is out there. That's something that would be beyond our equipment and personnel abilities without really staffing up. And I think it's going to be more cost-effective to do it that way with a contractor.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So on a, B is consider the approval of the contract buying between the city of Nacogdoches and Dupla Chain Contractors. Who's Case Offerman? Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor City Council, I am the elusive Assistant Director of Public Works, Case Offerman. Bringing before you tonight a consideration of approval of a contract buying between the city and Dupla Chain Contractors for the 2020 West Cox Waterline Replacement Project in a not to exceed amount of $203,932. Just a little background, West Cox Street runs just south of Nettie Marshall Elementary. We've had several frequent failures on that line due to age, pressure issues, things of that sort. It kind of came to a head a couple of months ago where we had, I think, three repairs in a weekend about 20 feet apart. And so it really drew our eye to the fact that this really just needs to be addressed. We need to get this line completely replaced so that we're not just patching along the way. And so what we did was we contracted on a, kind of a quick turnaround engineering design to get this out on the street as quickly as possible. And we were very pleased that we had three very close bids on this. Dupla Chain, as I said, at $203,000. John Wright Construction, really close at $205,260. That's, that's, that tells you that everybody saw the same thing whenever they were bidding this project. And so East Texas Utility was still fairly close, but a little higher. But Dupla Chain was found to be the lowest responsible bidder. Dupla Chain does a lot of work here. They do a, a good job every time. And so we're very happy to have them back. And I would entertain any questions that y'all have at this time, but we would recommend approval of this bid.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No questions for me.
Mr. Baldwin?
No, ma'am, no questions.
Anderson?
I just have one comment to make because that is right behind my house. I'm very much in favor of not hearing jackhammers at three o'clock in the morning.
Well, we won't be, we won't be doing the construction during that.
No, no, no. I was talking about the repairs that went on, that they had to do.
Try to eliminate that from now on.
It was a noisy weekend in our neighborhood. So I'm all for the replacement.
I believe that.
Did you have anything?
I believe that Mr. Councilmember Jay Anderson is conflicted out of making that comment. No, I got nothing. Thanks, Case.
Very welcome.
Okay. Well, if there is no further discussion, Chair would entertain a motion.
Well, I make a motion to approve the contract buying between the city of Nacogdoches and Dupla Chain Contractors for the 2020 West Cox Line Replacement Project in a not to exceed amount of $203,932.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number eight is our executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. It is 6:05 PM and council will now be going into executive session. So we let us know when we're clear. And everyone is gone and we're going to hear from Mr. Pearl. All right, Mr. Pearl, are you ready? Yeah, he needs to stay just to make sure
Yeah.
We're, yeah. We're not broadcasting. Absolutely. So
It's on CNN.
So, yeah. So go ahead, Stephen. You're up.
All right. Well, I was made aware y'all had the four interviews and I think they all went pretty good. And it sounds like y'all have a top pick that y'all are considering from those interviews. So just kind of getting back in the loop in the discussions on what y'all would need from me in addition to help you make your decision on your bottom pick?
Okay. So I believe the, the consensus of the council was that we were interested in, in making also was that if he was, decided he was not interested, that we probably led, are, are strongly leaning to doing another search. Am I, do I have that?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
Mario did talk with him. And y'all already know this?
No, I
No.
I was just nodding that, yes, I knew he talked to him. I'm sorry.
He is interested and would like to proceed as a prosecutor.
Okay.
He said years ago, he spoke with his wife, I believe, and he said
Okay. So what is our next step?
All right. So on our timeline for this, we have authorized the mayor to enter into contract negotiations with Mr. Byron Brown, if that's the lone finalist, and then also naming the lone finalist tonight. And I'm assuming that would need to be in, back in open session
Yes.
To do that. So I guess the, the next step would be naming Mr. Brown as the lone finalist and then authorizing you to begin those contract negotiations with him.
And we are clear to do that with his approval.
So, may I approach?
Yes.
Yes, I, I spoke to, after our, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
After we spoke on Saturday, after with council, I did reach out to him and he called me back. And, you know, so he would think about it like as, as Stephen mentioned, he is very interested. He is in, because they have council meetings on Tuesdays, just like we are. We're, he's probably in the middle of a meeting right now. So he just wanted to know when the council makes the call publicly, just to text him or the mayor could text him, just to make him aware so he can go ahead and let his employer know. So he's, he's, he's ready to, to, for that notice, notification to be made in public.
Okay. So go right ahead, Stephen. What else?
Do you have a cellphone? Okay. Because I was going to, okay. And as far, as far as going forward, we, we have the backgrounds on him. Everything came back clear. So there's, there's no surprises there. We haven't done any reference checks besides. I think Mario contacted the city manager that he listed, Mr. Harper, talked with him. I don't think there was anything negative. Have you spoken with him about that? And so what I would suggest is ask for additional references and see who we can contact to, to also continue to have those, those discussions since he's, when he is named the lone finalist, to provide you any additional information that we, we may have. I did do not a Facebook search, but the media search to see what was out there on him for news articles and stuff. And I really did not find much. I found his information from his current law firm that he practices on, which I included that in your council packet, binder. Is there, and then also, you know, the drug test is part of, part of our hiring process. But if there's any other additional information you would like me to seek out or look for, please.
I don't think so reference-wise. I think the only question that we might want to discuss just a little bit is moving date, start date. And Mario, do you want to, and I'm sorry, Stephen may be able to
No, Mario has the conversation with him. And so I, I've heard it through Mario. I think he did want to talk about the start date and, and moving his family and all of that and maybe do some, over the phone, driving in a couple of days to begin with or however that will work out before he can get his house sold, find somewhere to live over here and all that. So I think it's all appropriate. So it's just working with him to, on what's the best fit for him and the city to get
So council has given a, a parameter for, for example, salary, but this part we did not discuss. We had talked about when we'd like someone to start. So go right.
Sure. He, he's well aware that we're wanting, obviously he knows, you all mentioned that about the situation with Mr. Davis. And so he is well aware that having a city attorney on-site or at least available on, under our employment, January 4th. I don't think he has a problem with that. His biggest issue, of course, is trying to find a home and sell a home in the holidays. And so he's got young children. No one's, they're not in school. They're, I think they're three or four years old. So they're not in school. So that's not really an issue for him as far as schooling. It really is just a matter of just, you know, letting his employer know that he's resigning, putting all that notice requirements in place and then starting to locate property or home here in Nacogdoches. So really, I think it's just a matter of just getting things to happen. What he requested, just talking with him on Saturday, was would council be amenable to him doing Zoom or online calls with staff on the kind of the normal day basis, but at council meetings be present?
Okay. And then, but we have to nail down a moving date at, I mean, of something, you know? I, I think like March or April or, you know?
Certainly. Yeah. And I think whatever is reasonable. I mean, I don't know, again, you know, and again, just for my contract, I had 30 days to be on-site. So whatever that meant. Just I had to be on-site here 30, present 30 days and, and whether he, I just don't know quite honestly what the housing market is in Nacogdoches and what the housing market is in the city in which he lives in and he wants to sell. And, and trying to sell a home probably in the month of December is pretty challenging. So if, I, I think if you were working with him and gave him 30, 45 days to try to locate here, or even if you think about December as sort of a lost month.
Right.
You might want to get him until end of February. Again, it's, it's just sort of up to you all and what's, what's reasonable based on the timing and everything. Because trying to start at the beginning of a calendar year is tough.
Right. And do you think, I mean, would it be your advice that he would be able to go ahead and start early January with a contract and full pay and all of that, working virtually? And, and you, you're okay with that versus having
Absolutely. I would assume that depending on his situation at work, I would like to have him come in sometime before Christmas, just to spend a few days with staff, to get to know the staff themselves, get him some time with, with Jeff Davis. He needs to hire someone. So because Meredith is going with Jeff as part of the transition. So the sooner the better. He can at least come on, come here and get acclimated with the community, even if it's just spending a couple of days in one of the hotels, just so him and his wife and family can search. I mean, you all offered that opportunity for me during that process. I didn't need to take that option, but, but that was available to me. And so I think that would be reasonable for him to do that. I don't see there being a problem him starting on the 4th of January and working with us remotely. And then he would probably be here on the 5th because there's a council meeting on the 5th. So that's how we kind of have arranged it. And I think he would be okay with it, as long as you all are okay with it.
Okay. So what other questions does anyone have?
Just, just practically speaking, Jake can probably speak to this better than I can, but from what I'm, from what I can tell, last week, it's taken 60 to 80 days to even refinance right now. And so if we, if, if he's wanting to come in and buy a home, which he indicated that he was, that might just be maybe us, us being a little bit sensitive, that might be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think given the timing, given sort of the totality of, of the environment for doing what he's trying to do right now, I, I personally would be in favor of maybe making end of February sort of an absolute move, move date.
Well
Because that, that gets him through Christmas and gives him 60 days to, because it, it is difficult to, to do anything during the holidays.
Sure.
Not impossible, but
Sure.
And he may be able to, to make it happen more quickly.
And he did indicate, him and his wife over the weekend were already going online, looking at properties here in Nacogdoches. So there's excitement there.
Yeah.
They just don't own anyone.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know whether, whether his purchase of, of a house here is dependent upon sale.
Contingent of another, exactly.
If, if it is, then, then certainly I think giving that time cushion would be appropriate. But as long as you're comfortable with, you know, if everybody
Well, I, I would tell you, pre-COVID, I wouldn't be. But coming from an organization where everything was done virtually, including staff meetings, and we lived in the Zoom world or Microsoft Teams world, it's very doable. It's much nicer to be face-to-face. But it's, we've, we've been able to, organizations have adapted very quickly in the post-COVID world. So I, I see no problem why we couldn't continue doing that here in Nacogdoches.
Okay. And anybody have anything else?
What is the motion that needs to be made, certainly to name Byron Brown as the sole finalist? How about for the second to authorize our mayor to negotiate? What, what is the remainder of that concept?
For the motion? I think that
That's it. To negotiate, to negotiate, name him the lone finalist and authorize the mayor, mayor to negotiate a contract and an agreement with Byron Brown.
What, what did you expect in the timeframe for the negotiation for the contract?
Well, well, based on the, I believe on the calendar, we would be bringing back to use, we hope, a finalized contract on December the 1st. So, you know, we have just, you know, two weeks, two to three weeks or so to kind of get all that finalized. Now, again, that could go longer. I hope it wouldn't, but it could in theory. But the quicker we can get him ink, the quicker he can get here a few days and spend time with staff and, and the outgoing city attorney. And that way we can be off in the races.
I love that idea. That's great.
Yeah. I'm glad that he's very amenable to spending some time with Jeff.
Oh, yeah. And vice versa. And vice versa.
It'll make the, yeah, transition a lot further.
Okay. And everybody, everybody's good. Okay. Amelia, you awake?
I'm good.
Okay. So
That is a totally legit question.
Okay. And you don't have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. So if you will let us know when we're ready to go back into regular session. Where's my pursuant to there? Little clause.
All right, you're ready.
Okay. Okay. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, council has returned from executive session. It is 6:19 PM on November 17th, 2020. And we did have discussion and Chair will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we name Byron Brown as the sole finalist for the city manager position and authorize our mayor to negotiate an employment agreement with Mr. Brown.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded that we name Byron Brown as the lone finalist for the city attorney position and authorizing Mayor Brophy to negotiate that contract. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our meeting for November 17th, 2020 meeting. 2020 meeting is adjourned. Bye, Amelia.
Bye. Have a good night, y'all.
You too.